Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. Roll call, please.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon.
Snow.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Wayne.
Williams.
Present.
Five present.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So a motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Mrs. Fay. Are there any abstentions?
Apparently, I will be abstaining from Claims Report C.
Okay.
I don't know why.
So, motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Fay, with abstention on Report C by Ms. America. If there are no other abstentions, roll call, please.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Five aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the information items, we have E1A attendance and absenteeism. So I think that they're ready to present. I also want to distraught everyone's attention that you also had on your agenda an item marked "information" item. This is the format that we had previously discussed at the board table about standard format for board items. So that's what you're going to start seeing on all information items, and then it'll come back when there's an action item. It will be on some consent agenda items as well. So I just want to thank Mr. Ray for working with district staff to get this going. So with that, we will turn over the workshop portion to all of the different folks who don't have mics over there, right?
Are we ready?
Good evening. My name is Jerry Corner. I'm coordinator of Community School and Family Engagement for the district. I'm here tonight with members of the attendance committee. We want to first say thank you for having us. Tonight, we will discuss attendance and absenteeism. But before we get started, I'd like to have the various members of the committee introduce themselves, starting with Casey Hughes Research.
Tyree Secora, the Office of Community and Family Engagement.
Scott Schmitz, Research.
Thank you very much. Tonight, members of the committee will discuss data ranging from 2012 to 2016. Information discussed will include students who are general education students, special education students, and Blackburn students, grades K through 12. But will exclude the list of general education programs that you see listed there at the bottom of the screen. Specific codes that will be discussed this evening include excused absences of bereavement, court or legal appearances, illness, medically excused, military leave, post-secondary visits, religious holiday observance, and suspensions. Excused absences, excuse me, unexcused absences will include absent, truant, and unverified. And there at the bottom of the screen, you'll see absence codes not used in this analysis will include school-sponsored activities, office, student success center, and interim, as these codes are not reported to the state at this time. To give you an idea of the layout, the first part of the presentation, you'll hear from the research division, and they'll address the following. Illness code, policy change impact. Attendance codes, policy change impact. Attendance and NESA. Absenteeism. Absenteeism 10 or more days by subgroup. And comparison to the State of Nebraska attendance. For the second part of the presentation, we'll hear from Dr. Tyree Secora, and she'll address county attorney referrals, reasons why students are absent from school, accurate input of attendance data by school staff, training support for building staff and tools. With this said, I'm going to pass it to Mr. Casey Hughes.
Thanks, Jerry. The first thing we're going to look at is policy change impact for two different things that were done between the 2014, excuse me, 1314 and 1415 school year. The first is moving illness from an unexcused absence to an excused absence, and the second is the creation of five different absence codes: bereavement, court or legal appearance, military leave, post-secondary visits, and religious holiday observance. Those five different absence codes were likely included in the just regular absent code or the unverified code in the past, so they would have been unexcused absences. These five codes that were created are excused absences. So first, looking at the ratio of illness absences in Semester 1. And I'm just going to go over quickly how the first portion of this is kind of formatted. We've got data from 2012-13, 1314, before the policy changes, as well as 1415 and 1516. In all cases, when we're using 2015-16 data, we're looking at just Semester 1. Because 1516 is not over at this point, we wanted comparable data on two years on either side of that policy change, so we use Semester 1 information to compare across those years. So when we look at illness codes, what these graphs are representing are the percentage of all absences that are made up of illness. So in 2012-13, about 27% of all absences were marked with the illness code. You can see in 1314, it was about 25%. And then after the policy change, it stated about 25%. And in the first semester of this school year, went down to about 23%. So in general, the use of the illness absence code not only has not increased, but it has decreased since the policy changed for 2014-15. We also looked specifically at medical codes. You'll notice that the percentage of absent codes that are medical is a lot lower than illness. Likely that's because the threshold to get a medical absence would be a doctor's note, so it's much more difficult to get a medical absence than it is to get an illness absence. But both of them are excused absences. So first, looking at the ratio of illness absences in Semester 1. And I'm just going to go over quickly how the first portion of this is kind of formatted. We've got data from 2012-13, 1314, before the policy changes, as well as 1415 and 1516. In all cases, when we're using 2015-16 data, we're looking at just Semester 1. Because 1516 is not over at this point, we wanted comparable data on two years on either side of that policy change, so we use Semester 1 information to compare across those years. So when we look at illness codes, what these graphs are representing are the percentage of all absences that are made up of illness. So in 2012-13, about 27% of all absences were marked with the illness code. You can see in 1314, it was about 25%. And then after the policy change, it stated about 25%. And in the first semester of this school year, went down to about 23%. So in general, the use of the illness absence code not only has not increased, but it has decreased since the policy changed for 2014-15. We also looked specifically at medical codes. You'll notice that the percentage of absent codes that are medical is a lot lower than illness. Likely that's because the threshold to get a medical absence would be a doctor's note, so it's much more difficult to get a medical absence than it is to get an illness absence. But both of them are excused absences. You'll see in 2012-13, percentage of codes in the first semester of that year that were medical codes was about 9.5%. You can see in 1314 and 1415, it were pretty much the same, at about 11%, little over 11%. And then in 1516, just below 11% at 10.7%. So a bit of an increase over 1213 information, but across the policy change years, 1314 to 1415, little to no increase, and in fact, a decline in the 1516 school year. Looking at the same information across grade level, you see a number of different things. So for the illness code, again, used more often than the medical code. At grades K through 5, on average, about 30% of all absences over the last four years have been illness codes. Go to high school, and it's only about 20%. So a decline in the use of those codes going from elementary school, middle school, to high school. Similarly, with medical codes, you see about 15% use of that code in grades K through 5, down to about 7% in high school. So in general, the use of the illness and the medical code is decreasing as you increase in grade level. This is pretty much the same graph, but it shows specifically for 2015-16, so the first semester of this school year, by grade level, the percentage of absences for both illness and medical that make up all absences. Again, you see, beginning in kindergarten, you have about 30% of all absences are illness absences. And then in 12th grade, you're down to about 16%. And with medical, you're sitting at about 16% at kindergarten and about 6% at 12th grade. So in general, again, a decline in the use of those codes, beginning in kindergarten and going to high school. So the use of the illness and medical codes appear to be stable or in decline in general over the last four years. Moving the illness code from an unexcused to an excused absence after the 1314 school year doesn't appear to have resulted in increased use of that code in the first semester of the 2014-15 or the 1516 school year. However, the reporting or the recording or input of this attendance data could play a role in the trends that we see. This is to say that it's not necessarily that students were ill less often, or were seeing a doctor less often, but potentially, the use of the codes could be slightly different, which is why you're seeing the decline in the use of them. So the second thing we wanted to look at, after we looked at those two individual codes, are the use of all of the codes across the school district and in a number of different grade level scenarios. So this is looking at, again, 1213 through 1516, first semester data, and it looks at the use of all attendance codes that we're including in this analysis. You can see that most of the codes are decreasing across that time period, with the exception of the unverified code. You see it increases from 21% in 2012-13 to about 30% in 2015-16. Additionally, you can see the very small blue lines there. That's the percentage of absences that are made up of the five new attendance categories. So that's the bereavement, military leave, religious holiday observance, post-secondary visit, and one more. So those are only about 1.6% and 1.8% of absences from 1415 and 1516. When we split those absences into how they were defined as excused or unexcused in both 1213, 1314, and then the change in 1415 and 1516, we obviously see a pretty significant difference in the percentage of absences that are unexcused. So in 2012-13 and 1314, you've got about 85% or 83% of all absences that are unexcused absences. Following the policy change of the illness code moving and the creation of those five new codes, you're down to about 56% and 60% of absences being unexcused in 2014-15 and 1516, respectively. Again, looking at this information across time and for different grade levels, you see some similar trends. So the use of the unverified code, you can tell, has increased over time at all grade levels, and increases as grade level increases. So at the elementary level, you can see in 1213, you're looking at about 11% of all absences being unverified. In 1516, it was about 17, almost 18% of absences being unverified. Looking at high school, you see in about 1213, 34% of all absences being unverified. And in 1516, about 34%, or excuse me, 43% of all absences being unverified. The other things you'll notice are that truant is rarely if ever used at the K5 or 68, elementary or middle school levels, and mostly used at the high school level. And the use of those five new codes, identified as the light blue there, the new excused absence codes, are used at all grade levels, so at elementary school, middle school, and high school. So the addition of the illness as an excused absence has resulted in the inclusion of about 24% of all absences into the excused category. The unverified and absent codes make up more than half of all absences. And so this lack of information about a specific reason that a student might be absent makes it a little bit difficult to understand the full nature of absenteeism in the district. If you remember, unverified, and you can look back at the, I believe it's the second page, it'll identify what all those absent codes mean. But unverified is where no one's called to school. The student is not there, but no one has contacted the school to suggest why. And then absent is where someone's contacted the school, but there's no reason for the absence. It doesn't fit into one of our five categories, doesn't fit medical illness or any of the other identifications for absence. The student is simply absent. And one of the reasons we think that the unverified is so high at the high school level, and this was some work done by Dr. Secora and IMS, and I believe you contacted some principals, at the high school level, a period absence is marked as an A. The teacher is not marking whether or not a student is absent because of an illness or medical or some other reason. They're simply marking the student wasn't there. If the student comes, that would be marked as a tardy. The student isn't absent with a tardy. It's just a mark as an event, there being a tardy. If the student doesn't come, the A would stay in that period absence. If that period absence is not changed to the reason that a student is absent, so for instance, if a bunch of As are appearing at each period, but no one goes back to change it into an illness absence, those As will roll in as unverified absences. And with that, I'll turn it over to Scott. He'll talk a little bit about attendance and student outcomes.
Indeed. Thank you, Casey. So when we looked at this, we found that no matter how we reviewed it, attendance was significantly related to student achievement. And that makes sense. You can't deliver the very best curriculum to students who are absent. So first, we looked at whether it mattered if a student was only a full academic year student, which is to say, in attendance, greater than 80% of the time, or if it was any student, so a student who may have just come through the district for a short amount of time. And it didn't matter which sample we used, that relationship held true. We also looked at different categorizations or classifications, moreover, of absenteeism, be it as a continuous variable, just adding together all of the students' absences in whole day and partial day increments, or if we looked at it as a ratio between days present and days absent, or if we categorized the data and analyzed it that way, as the 0 to 5, greater than 5, so on and so forth. Regardless of how we looked at the data or which groupings of students we included, that relationship was maintained. That student attendance significantly predicted student achievement. Now, having found this for the most recent school year's worth of data, that being 1415, most recent full year of data, we also tested these findings on 1314 and found them to hold as well. So to speak to specifically what we see in the data, we see that the far left, with the highest level of attendance, so around 0 to even up to 5 absences, students performed very well on the NESA reading, math, and science subject tests. In reading in particular, we see that students, on average, with 0 absences, are approaching the exceeding category. So exceeding state standards, doing very well at 0 absences, and doing very well across those subject tests, even up to 5. However, when we get to greater than 10 absences, we find that a majority of students are found not to be proficient in the areas of math and science. Additionally, when we get to greater than 20 absences, we find that a majority of students are not proficient in reading as well. So to reiterate, attendance is a significant predictor of student achievement across NESA reading, math, and science. This predictive power is consistent, whether we look at whole, or full academic year kids versus those who are in the district for a shorter amount of time, or how we classify attendance. And what we find is that, on average, students miss one scale score point or drop one scale score point, for every day they are absent. So what we also find, while attendance is a very significant factor in predicting student achievement, there is some slight variation in that predictive power, such that math and reading are slightly better predicted by absenteeism than is science. And that makes some sense, given that we assess students in grades 5, 8, and 11 in science, and across 3 through 8 and 11 in those other areas. So you have a much greater likelihood of a cohort effect and other things, leading to variability in that science data. So that makes sense. What we also find is that attendance is a necessary element for student achievement, but it is not a sufficient element in ensuring high student achievement, which is to say, you have to have students in the seat and learning, but once they're there, it's how you utilize that time with them that matters most to getting them that high level of achievement. Now, having talked about the impact of the policy on the trends in absenteeism we're seeing, thank you, Casey, for that. Casey will now describe for us kind of the prevalence in absenteeism amongst the student body, and Tyree will finish with the district's current efforts to combat absenteeism.
Thank you. So looking at absenteeism, this will kind of give you an idea about how these next number of graphs are laid out. We split students into four different categories in terms of absences. That's less than 10 absences, 10 to less than 15 absences, 15 to less than 20, and 20 or more absences. Additionally, you'll notice that the data for this is 1213, 1314, and 1415. When we start looking at subgroup, it'll just be 1415. The reason we don't have the most recent data is because when we're looking at total days missed, we need a full year of data to be comparable. So we're not including the 1516 data, obviously, because the school year is not finished yet. So looking at this information, you see about 63%, so the green portion, over the last three years of students have missed less than 10 days. So that leaves about 37% of students who have missed 10 or more days over the last three years. Now, to give you an idea, 10 days is about 6% of the school year. Often times, people talk about the 10% absenteeism rates. So we didn't group it by percentage. We grouped it by days, because I think days are a little more understandable, but I also wanted to give you those percentage marks to allow you to look at it in that way as well. So we see that students missing 10 or more days, that stayed pretty stable. When we look at students missing 20 or more days, we've got about 13% of students over the last three years that have missed 20 or more days. And again, to give you an idea, that's about 12% of the school year, so over that 10% threshold. When we look at the same information by grade level, and this is just for 2014-15, the last year we have full data for, we took off the students missing less than 10 days, and we're just showing you essentially 10 to 15, 15 to 20, and 20 or more. You see a pretty gradual trend of the increase in the percentage of students who are missing 10 or more days, and for that matter, 20 or more days, starting in 5th grade and increasing until the high school level. You also see kind of an increase at the kindergarten and first grade levels, and then a decline kind of bottoming out at 3rd grade. When you get to 11th grade, you see about 60% of students have missed 10 or more days, and about a third of them have missed 20 or more days. And this is just for the 2014-15 school year. So the percentage of students missing 10 or more days has declined very slightly over the last three years. The percentage of students missing 20 or more days has actually increased very slightly over the last three years. And this, you know, it's also important to remember, a day of absence can result in a full missed, or can be a full missed day of school, or it can be an accumulation of period or late to school absences. So when we talk about a student missing 10 days, that can be 10 full days of absence, 20 half-days of absence, or any combination of period absence, late to school, half-day or full-day absences. The other thing we see is that secondary level accounts for the highest percentage of students who are missing 10 or more days. It's also the location where we have the highest amount of unverified absences, and so again, this limits our ability to understand specific reasons why students are missing school at this level. So the next section we're going to do is just looking at students who are missing 10 or more days, not breaking them out again to, excuse me, 15 to 20, or 20 or more, but looking at these students by a number of different subgroups. And again, this is just for the 2014-15 school year. When we look at it by race, ethnicity, we do see some differences between racial groups. Hispanic, African-American, multiracial, Native American, all higher than white students. The last three categories, Asian, Native American, and Pacific Islander, are all pretty small groups, so trends that you see there, you know, might be affected by the number of students in the group. But in general, across grade levels, you see pretty similar trend as we would have seen in some of those other graphs, at all racial groups. When we look at it by gender, we see very little difference. Essentially, the same percentage of students who are missing 10 or more days in 2014-15, at about 36% for both males and females. When you look at minority, as the previous graph suggested, minority students are missing, about 37% of minority students missed 10 or more days in 2014-15, and only about 32% of non-minority students were missing 10 or more days in 2014-15. When we look at ESL, we see that current and former ESL students are less likely to have missed 10 or more days. So about 26% of all current ESL students missed 10 or more days in 2014-15, and about 38% of non-ESL students missed 10 or more days. Refugee students, again, less likely to have missed 10 or more days in 2014-15, although this is a pretty small group. You'll notice that it's only 481 students who missed that 10 or more days, but that's about 23% of the refugee group, and about 37% for non-refugee students. When we look at free and reduced lunch, there's a difference. About 40% of free and reduced lunch students missed 10 or more days in 2014-15, and about 25% for students not on free and reduced lunch. When we look at special education, there's a slight difference. Special education students missed, about 41% of those students missed 10 or more days in 2014-15, and about 35% of non-special education students. And finally, we look at transportation. We split this one out by grade level. In general, students that were receiving transportation in 2014-15 were slightly more likely to have missed 10 or more days. But when you break it out by grade level, students at grades K5 were slightly less likely, 68 is pretty much the same, and at 912, you were slightly more likely to have missed 10 or more days in 2014-15. We also broke this out, it's not represented here, we had to cut a number of slides, because it turns out, when you start cutting this data up, there are a lot of different ways to look at it. But we did look at it by free and reduced lunch and transportation, and the difference that we see in free and reduced lunch and non-free reduced lunch students didn't appear to be mitigated by transportation. So the differences in the free reduced lunch and non-free reduced lunch students who are missing 10 or more days was still there, regardless if they were transported or not So just for some final comparison, we want to look at State of Nebraska data. So we were able to get a data set from NDE for 2014-15 with roughly the same information as we are using. They're using students with 10 or more absences. Actually, I believe it's more than 10 absences, so there's a very small group that is not comparable. In ours, we're including students who are over 10, and this one is 10 or more. So anyone with exactly 10 is included in the state data, but not included in our data. So you see very, very similar trends at the grade level. So from kindergarten to 12th grade, you see that same increase at kindergarten and that kind of drop-off into 3rd grade, and then an increase starting in 5th grade, and all the way to the highest percentages of students missing 10 or more days at the high school In 2014-15, about 26% of all public school students in the state missed 10 or more days, or excuse me, more than 10 days. And again, in OPS, that was about 37% in that same year. OPS had the 22nd highest percentage of students missing more than 10 days in 2014-15. That's out of 245 districts. OPS makes up about 17% of all public school students in the state of Nebraska, and that's in grades K through 12. And we have about 23% of all students who missed 10 or more days. So we're slightly overrepresented in terms of students who are missing 10 or more days. On average, students on free and reduced lunch at the state level, about 34% of them missed 10 or more days in 2014-15. Again, that was 40% in OPS. And about 26% of non-free reduced lunch students missed 10 or more days in 2014-15. In OPS, that was 25%. We also see similar discrepancies in race, ethnicity. So at the state level, about 53% of Native Americans missed 10 or more days in 2014-15, about 38% of African-Americans. Again, over the 26% average for the entire state or all students. And then we also see, as we saw in the previous graph, similar increases going from elementary school to middle school to high school in terms of students who are missing 10 or more So in review, the rate at which students missed 10 or more days in 2014-15 differed as a function of many demographic and programmatic variables. Percentage of students missing 10 or more days doesn't appear to differ by gender or dis- or transportation status. Rates do appear to be higher for minority students and students receiving free and reduced-priced lunch. Students currently being served in the ESL program or identified as refugees appear to be less likely to have missed 10 or more days than their non-ESL, non-refugee counterparts. And when compared to the state OPS trends, appear to be similar in terms of differences between grade levels and demographic groups. So that concludes the kind of the data portion. I'll turn it over to Dr. Secora, and she'll talk about current district attendance efforts.
Perfect. So the disclaimer is, prior to all this, there's been a lot already working on towards improving attendance in OPS. However, by looking at the data more thoroughly and in the way that we did, and the conversations we were able to have on the team, we were able to hone in more specifically on things that we could do to help our district with improving attendance. So the topics that we're going to discuss are county attorney referrals, reasons why students are absent from school, accurate input of attendance data by school staff, training and support for building staff, and tools. So state statute states that at 20 days, schools may refer students to the county attorney as long as specific things have been met. Again, that's "may." So, the first bullet, "The impact of attendance policy changes should not be evaluated based on the number of county attorney referrals made by the SSL or designee." That's a school preference based on things such as if a student's on vacation, and the school knows that they've been gone for a week and a half, well, we know where seven of those days were. And then they went on vacation again next semester, so we know where the next eight days were. So, really, it's not an attendance concern. We know where their student was, we're working with the family to make sure that those assignments are getting caught up. Also, we have oftentimes where there's a family member, maybe in Mexico, that's out ill, and so a student will be gone for 12 days. It's not really a concern if they reached 20 days, but we know where 12 days of those are. Others are when the, the student has a huge attendance concern, but the school starts working with them, provides community services, they start to improve on the attendance. We don't want to penalize them if we are seeing improvement. So, if they continue to improve, we don't want to send that county attorney referral because we want to work with the families. As well as sometimes the school just has not put enough efforts into helping provide supports to the family, so at that point in time, the county attorney doesn't want to see the referral. They want to make sure that the school has done everything that they can based on state statute to, to support that family. So, therefore, since it's not mandatory to send it at 20 days, that's why the county attorney referral is not a good indicator for, for specific data. Next is understanding, or sometimes not understanding, the reasons of absences, specifically with what Casey had stated prior to. The use of unverified and absent codes types do not allow us to fully understand why many of the students are not in school. For example, when he used the example of, of teachers putting in the A code, and then those just, if they don't get fixed, if somebody doesn't call in, those get turned into unverified. One of the things that we did put into place was the automated telephone calls, and there's a lot of pros with that. The parents are getting notified twice a day via phone call, via email, to know that there's been an attendance infraction. So, if there's concern there, they can contact the school, and schools find it as an easy process. However, the cons is, with the automated robocall, there isn't that one-on-one communication to build those relationships, and oftentimes, families don't call back, so we don't have that specific reason for why a student is gone. In secondary schools, it's more difficult, just by pure number of students, to be able to make those contacts for every single student. Therefore, as Casey had stated, the unverifieds in your secondary schools are going to be greater than what most often you see in the elementary level. So, to ensure that accurate data input is being done, we've been working hard to improve that, that, um, that, that consistency is across all buildings. And so, one of the things that I've already done is collected data from all secondary schools, and it was based on question-answer form. If this happens in your school, how do you document it? Or if this happens, then what? And I took all of that information from all the schools, and I made it into a spreadsheet, then created a district attendance committee where we sat down and we clearly defined, as a committee, what the definitions mean. So, if I'm talking about bereavement, well, does that mean bereavement as in my dog died, so I get to stay home? Or what specifically does that mean? And then based on those conversations and the questions that were brought out from not only the district attendance committee and the questions, we've made an FAQ. And that FAQ is going to actually, we put in a school support handbook that is currently being created to be able to answer specific questions for attendance. And we'll continue to outline those practices in that, and then revamp, review every single year to make sure that we're inputting all the information that we need to be able to help support schools. And, so to continue on with the training and support, the attendance secretaries is a key piece because they are obviously the ones that have their hands most dealt in with the attendance and inputting that data. Currently, there is consistent training going on for our elementary secondaries, secretaries, however, not so much in the secondary schools. So, that's one thing that I want to implement next year, is to make sure that we are doing it consistent throughout the entire school year, and when new secretaries come on, that everybody knows the, the correct way to input that data. For building administrators, just continue to emphasize that attendance is a priority, and provide each school with their own attendance data. That's something that I think we really found by looking at this data, that we were able to specifically say, okay, this is something we need to address, or this is something we need to look at. So, the, the, the step is to make an attendance tableau that schools can look at their own attendance data to be able to best support their school and see what their needs are. And then to review current school attendance practices and laws. For the SSL and designee, we would continue training on the county attorney referrals and the collaborative attendance improvement plan, as well as providing tools for the toolbox, which we'll address soon. And then always providing that support from the Office of Community School and Family Engagement whenever there's a question. You know, I have this situation going on, is this something that we need to send for our county attorney referral? Or what's the best case scenario in this? Or what are the opportunities or the things that we can provide to this family? Because these are the needs that we're seeing. For counselors and social workers, again, that's going to be tools for the toolbox. Teachers, continue training on accurate input of data at the building level. And then parents and students providing that access to the community service providers. So, again, what are the tools? An attendance team is, has been created at every building level, and those attendance teams are to be able to discuss what's already currently in place for that family, what are the barriers that we're still seeing, and what more can we do to help? So, at 10 days, every school is getting together with their attendance team to be able to address those situations for each individual child that reaches 10 or more days. Then the collaborative attendance improvement plan, it is required by state law and expected now by county attorneys, but that is really to help them meet together as not only a team, but also to reach out to the families, to, to ask the families what are the specific things based on those six, I think it's six, five? Educational counseling, educational evaluation, economic needs, individual or family counseling, and community service support. So, those five pillars. Another thing that we're going to implement next year is called STECS absenteeism intervention management, and really what it is, is a tool. It's like a grid that breaks it down into, let's talk through this. Let's find out what are the specific things, whether it's transportation, or whether it's a lack of having clothes, so I don't want to go to school. What are, what are the specific things? Not just the top level, but the down, dirty, deep things that are keeping our kids from school. And then finally, obviously, continuing to work with our community service providers such as Goals, Safe, Region Six, Connections, Yans, Jacks, et cetera. So, for a quick review, while the improvement of attendance should not be measured by the number of county attorney referrals submitted each year, school staff will continue to be trained on steps of this process, what is considered adequate support and interventions offered to families by the school, and when it is appropriate to refer a student who has concerning attendance. The Office of Community School and Family Engagement will continue training and supporting the building staff to more accurately identify reasons for absences in order to support families' individual needs. We will continue to collaborate with school staff to provide training and documentation for frequent, only asked questions and clarification of attendance recording practices, as well as continue to provide tools for school staff to help intervene with poor student attendance utilizing both district and community resources and support. So, at this time, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to present to you and ask if there are any questions.
All right, questions? I want to thank you first, before we get started on the questions, for the very thorough data that you provided to us and the analysis that you provided to us as well. I think that's extremely helpful, so. I will start with one question, and, and it's just my memory of, as a kindergarten parent, you know, I would always call if my child was sick immediately. As a high school parent, I'm not so good at that anymore. And so, sometimes I remember, like, three days later, and I call, and I don't know exactly what happens with that information. So, I'm wondering, so there's a couple of things. First of all, it's getting the accurate data, right? But then it's what do we do with the data? So, in getting accurate data, is there a way to, and I think we get an email, I know we get the call twice a day if our child is tardy or, or not there. Is there a way to allow the parent to respond immediately through either an email, or push one if your child was sick, and five if your child just didn't feel like going to school today, or whatever, you know, whatever it is? Because I'm wondering, when I looked at the data, those two groupings, you know, where you didn't have an answer at all, or you couldn't verify if it was good, in total, they're not that far off of where they used to be. And I'm just wondering, is, once people get into working when their kids are in high school, if it's just not as easy? If there was an easier way for parents to communicate back? So, that's just a question I pose. Ms. Williams?
I actually have this, a similar question to that, and so, maybe not the robocall, but I was really, I actually pulled one up from my own child. And, you know, it's got the please do not respond, but it would be really nice, as a working parent, to be able to shoot off a quick email and say, I forgot she was sick this morning, please note this absence. I, I have issue with the robocall a little bit, just because you just never know if it's a home phone, if it's a cellphone, if the kid's, you know. I mean, that gives you a good indicator, but I think the email portion would be nice, too, if it's coming from the attendance office, not the, kind of that blanket school email. As a working parent, I'm going to check my email way more than I'm going to check voicemail.
And I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if anybody on the team does, but that's something I can definitely look into, to see if that's even an option with the robocall, to be able to send back an email.
Okay. Well, I just, like I said, I, we, we think alike. That's great, as parents, because it is harder as they're in high school. You're like, oh, it'll be fine. I'm going, you got 20 days, you're way under, you're good. But it would be, it would be nice, so if we can at least look at that option, if maybe not the robocall, it can be something later, but I'd really like to see the, the email portion of it, because working parents are, most people are getting communication through email, so to be able to respond and know that at least you've got that taken care of, that would be beneficial and helpful for parents.
I, I guess, just thinking about that, I agree, because sometimes I'm checking that email at 11 o'clock at night, and then I tell myself I should call in the morning, and three days later, I realize, I never did make that phone call. So, I, that would be my comment on that.
I would say that, we know attendance data does change during the school year. So, for instance, the stuff that we pulled for first semester for 15, 16 has likely changed slightly today. I know specifically, I went back in and looked at it, and the, you know, that category, the five new absence codes, went from 1.8 percent to 1.9 percent at the district. If I were to look, I think I looked at it last week. So, there is a point at which people are going back in and updating those things, so you might get notified a week later, two weeks later, however it might be. Maybe if an attendance problem comes up, and someone says, well, you have 10 days now, and so, well, what do you mean, I have 10 days? And then someone identifies what some of those were. So, there is an ongoing process to update those codes.
Mrs. Fay.
So, back on the student achievement data portion of it, that was you, Scott, right? With the days absent corresponding directly with student achievement, did that stand across all socioeconomic levels? So, if you, the days absent for non-free and reduced lunch, for example, impacted student achievement the same way as it did for free and reduced lunch?
That's correct. And for many of these analyses, we control for all other char, or other factors, if you will, to make sure that the relationship was above those. So, is it lunch status that causes poor absenteeism? We wanted to exclude those types of questions, instead just looking at the impact of absenteeism. But the, the impact, as you will, does affect all students equally.
Good to know. Thank you.
Ms. Man.
Mr. Wayne?
The student breakdown, is it? For like, going back to Mrs. Fay with the, the cross-racial lines, are they multiple students, or are they one student, absent multiple times?
So, for that, those categories, we're looking at the percentage of students who missed 10 or more days. So, one, a student is represented one time in that data. So, if they miss 10 or more days, they're counted once in whichever category they fall into based on race, ethnicity, or a grade level.
Do we have a breakdown based off race and ethnicity of the reasons why they're absent according to the codes?
Uh, something that we could do. We didn't, we didn't include it in this one, but something that we could certainly do.
I would like to see that, plus the breakdown of students who are just 20 more, I want to go 19 or more absent.
19 or more?
19 or more, because right now, it's just 10 students or more, but I would like to bump that up to 19 and see where they're across.
Oh, so looking at, so there, there is a section where you, it looked, it goes 10 to 15, 15 to 20, or 20 or more, but you want the demographic or the?
I don't want to go 20, though, because 20 is considered a long-term suspension. So, if it's under 19, it would be a short-term. If it's at 19...
Long-term suspensions are? Long-term suspensions are six to 19 days. Short-term is five and under.
Six to 19?
Six to 19 is long-term suspension.
That's right.
When you start splitting?
20's fine, 20's fine.
And that was by race, ethnicity?
Yeah. And reasons, by codes.
Ms. Merrick? That, that's actually, ah, sorry, this is really far away from me now. That's actually just what I was going to ask by, because I wanted to verify on, like, slide 18, where it has all the absences. I guess 19 would work, too. With looking at 10 or more absences, and you have it broken down, the 10 to less than 15, 15 to 20, 20 or more, it would be interesting to see those 10 or more broken down by the codes, because like you said, the students who are on a suspension, which is technically an excused absence, or an illness, are included in that 10 or more, so we could see how many of, how much of that 10 or more is coming from excused absences versus absent versus unexcused versus truant, if that makes sense.
By race, ethnicity?
I would like to see it by that.
So, I mean, slide 13 does show us, and we, I don't know if, I think we might have taken this one out, the by grade.
And 11, too, I think. And 11, maybe?
Yeah, that's, that's for the district level, and then if you look at page 13, it's by, by grade level. It's not by grade. We did have one that was by grade. I'll tell you, we had to cut a significant number of slides to try and make our, sorry.
I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
No, I just, we, literally, we could have looked at this hundreds of different ways. I mean, you could start looking at it by school, and so, we can look at it in a lot of different ways. So, if we can just get the things you want to look at, we can, we can definitely attempt to, to make those, so.
I guess I'm asking you to combine?
Race, ethnicity?
13 and 19. Because 13, yes, it's showing us what percentage was each, but it's not telling us, okay, of your students with 20 absences, 30 percent of them were actually excused, 70 percent were, I felt, were unexcused absences.
Okay, so take those three groups.
That's what I'm saying.
10 to 15, 15 to 20, or 20 or more, and for those groups, what percentage does each absence code make up for those, those students?
Yes.
Okay. I did try to do that, I'll tell you, it was really complicated.
I'm so sorry.
And I couldn't get, no, that's okay. It's something that I, I want to do, so we'll, we'll see if we can figure it out.
Or even if it was just excused, unexcused.
Yeah.
That would work.
Well, we can figure it out.
Okay.
Mr. Wayne?
Just to clarify, I would, I would like that by race, because I'm curious to know, back to the academic, and as we see more students of color who are absent, what is the correlation between that and the achievement gap? I.e., does our suspension rate mirror or have a significant influence on our achievement If kids are absent from school, they're not learning, and if, if the majority of those kids, according to the data, the higher, are the higher numbers are minorities, I would like to see the correlation between that and our cross-reference with our NISA scores and our achievement gap.
Should maybe look at the percentage of absences made up by suspensions by group, and then?
Well, not just suspensions, but the whole category of absence, absences.
Okay.
And, I guess my last question is, I know you guys have a lot of things going on, but where would we get that data back?
Um, when?
I don't need a deadline, but I just, I'm just trying to stick firm to where we can.
I think that, I think splitting the, the ones that, that I'm, I can't speak for the one that Scott might have to do in terms of adding NISA into it. I think I can do these ones rather quickly. The last request, kind of combining, it's going to end up being a really large graph, because you're going to have to, I've split it in a number of different locations, but I think it can be done relatively quickly. I would say, you know, next week.
Two, two, three weeks, we'll get you. I just, because people are interested in this, and I just want to give them a timeframe.
Yeah, I'd say that's reasonable for the data I'll provide as well.
I have a question. I think, if I remember correctly, do we have a, a set number of consistent, or consecutive days that illness was accepted as an, as a, as a, an excused absence, and then if you didn't get a doctor's note by the fifth day? Is that, am I remembering that correctly and correctly?
There's nothing in the code that states that. That was one of the conversations that we had, but there's nothing that's set in stone like that.
Okay, so if I just call in and say, "My kid's sick for 10 days," that's 10 days excused?
As of right now, yes. The conversations that I'm having with my SSLs and Designies is that if that does come into play, which I had that happen when I was an SSL at Bryan Middle, I had a conversation with the mom, saying, "You know, I'm really concerned about your daughter, because if she's gone this many days, and there's not a doctor's note, then I'm almost to the point where I feel like I need to contact CPS, because I feel like either, one, she is ill, and there's a bigger issue here than just keeping her home that you need to get addressed, or she's being kept home, and this is the excuse. So she's losing out on her educational..." So like, I try to have a very upfront honest, and that's the conversation I'm having with our SSLs, because currently, right now, there's nothing in our code that states that there's only a certain number of days for ill before it's counted as an unexcused absence.
Okay, I guess I'd just like to throw that back to the board, that maybe we need to readdress that, because I think that's something that you don't want to just have the administration and the schools not having something to say. At this point, you need to have a doctor's note, so then we can address that situation.
I think, I think we did, I'm just looking to Mr. Ray, I remember that conversation. I thought it was five days.
Yeah, it was in one of the drafts, too, that we provided when we reviewed 6.27.
Right, so I think we did have a five-day in there, and you have to have a doctor's note after five days. I know we had that conversation, it was an extremely lengthy conversation at the board table, so we should go back and re-review that. So maybe, Mr. Ray, if you can...
I think it's important to point out, too, though, that even with the change of moving illness to an excused absence, we didn't see the use of that code increase as a percentage of all absences. So I think the common school of thought coming into this was that if you make it an excused absence, people will use it as an excused absence, and maybe accumulate, you know, a lot of days absent just by using that code. But it doesn't appear to be the case. In fact, it appears to be either stable or declining in use. So it doesn't appear that the policy has actually caused people to use it more often. Now, that might differ, if you look at, you know, individual schools, but across the district and across grade levels, and across years, it doesn't appear to have made a difference.
Right, and I can, and that was one of the reasons why I had asked before if we could bring this information back, because I think Page 6, I was worried that once people could call in and say, "Everyone, you know, my child's been ill," that that would go up, and it's actually decreased 4%. So, Mr. Scanlon and then Mrs. Fay.
I guess the reason I bring that up, I would like to see, you know, data by school, because I think that, you know, certain schools might have higher, higher absences, but I guess in the next conversation, if we decide to have it, that those days that a parent calls in, if we decide that it's at five days, and, you know, you get those five illness days, but if you're not able to then get a doctor's note, I would suggest that we change those five days to unexcused, because you're not able to confirm that sickness. And I think five days is, for most cases, you know, long enough to determine, you know, what that illness is, and you should get your child into a doctor by then.
Go ahead, and then Mrs. Fay.
And just, I guess to follow up on that, I think, I do, I firmly do, actually, looking after this data, it is, I feel, a case-by-case situation. And I think that if it is in place for those case-by-case situations, it definitely, I don't think it hurt anything. I mean, obviously, the data is showing that it's not hurting anything right now in general, but I think for the specific kids, if we're going to make sure that we're reaching each of the kids and supporting each of the kids, it might be something that's, that could be conducive. And also to state that I've talked to a fellow administrator in Westside, and, or I guess a student that I was going to school with at UNO, so Westside, and also some Millard staff, that state that they have case-by-case situations similar to that, and they're also looking as a board to put something into place at their districts at that same level, so.
Mrs. Fay.
I think regarding what Matt's talking about, rather than changing policy, which makes things really inflexible and doesn't allow you to do things on a case-by-case basis, I would rather see you all work out in your departments, protocol that triggers certain questions being asked, phone calls being made, so that, so that it's not left to the individual student support liaison, is that what they are, to make that determination, but they have a protocol that they follow, and that there are certain things that trigger certain actions. Because once we start putting too many things into policy, then we lose the flexibility, and we're sort of right back where we were when we changed it last year, or whenever that was. And that, you know, just, I mean, you know, my kid missed a bunch of school, and I didn't get a doctor's note, because I'm busy, you know, I just didn't do it, so, I'm sorry. But I had a question. Oh, so on the, towards the end of the presentation, when you're talking about the things that we're doing to support current district efforts, and when you're going into training and support, and what are the tools, are we doing anything to follow up with the students who are in these various programs and getting these various types of support, to see if that's having an impact on their personal student achievement? Are we, you know, are we able to say, you know, "We're helping these kids through the GOLs program," or through, you know, whatever it is, SAFE, R6 Connections, whatever, whatever? And I don't know whether you do an aggregate of all the kids who are involved in those, or you pull them out by program, I have no idea. But I mean, are we able to follow up and say, "When we do these things, we're seeing this type of impact?"
And actually, it's the programs that pull that information, because most of them are on grants, and they get paid based on it, the success of their program. So there's ROIs that are assigned for the students that go into the programs, so that they can provide, we can provide data to GOLs and SAFE Region 6, to be able to show that this is where the student was prior to working with you, and this is how they've improved, or maybe not improved, based on how much effort. So we get a, we get information from them regularly.
So maybe what would be helpful for us would be to see all of that together, and just, I don't know, just very broad, basic information, students who are pulled into these programs, you know, in general, I don't know if that's possible, Casey, or not, I know, I have no idea, but, you know, this is what we're seeing overall, as far as they're graduating on time, or their NISA scores are better than kids who don't part, I don't, I have no idea. But it would be nice to see what the outcome of all these things are, so. And this, by the way, is a really good report, and it's put together really well, and I know that there's just a lot of stuff pulled from all different kinds of data points, and so I just really thank you all for making the effort to put this together in a really clear way, so thank you.
Are there any other questions before we move on? Okay, Mr. Scanlon?
I just had a couple more. I guess with the intervention, is there any plan or procedure, when you don't have family involvement, that the district is taking to try to, I don't know, increase the chances of success?
Right now, the training that our SSLs and Designies and schools are getting is that you're always reaching out, trying to do what you can, whether that's phone call, whether that's setting up meetings, whether that's additional letters, because you haven't been able to reach them, or even home contacts, home visits. You always offer that support for the community service provider, however, it's, it's not a mandatory thing. They get to either choose to do it or not to do it. And then when that, when those things aren't working, that's when then the county attorney letters are sent, to be able to get that added support from the county attorney and the Juvenile Justice Center, based on the needs for state statutes stating that they need to be in school, so.
And I just, one other thing, obviously, as we continue to dissect this data, is there a way, I guess I've always been of the mindset that I'm not 100% sold that it's race and ethnicity. I think it's poverty levels. It doesn't necessarily matter what your race and ethnicity is. Is there a way to, and I understand that there are a higher number of certain subgroups that are in, in the free and reduced category, is there a way to get that to where we can compare apples to apples of the different ethnicities in poverty with...
By race, by free and reduced lunch?
Yeah, and I guess, where it, you know, not only attendance, but academic achievement, you know, if they, I guess, I just, I just believe that it doesn't necessarily matter what your race or ethnicity is. If you're in poverty, you're at a disadvantage, as far as a high achievement, or even just standard achievement. And I'd like to see if those, if the data backs that up or not, if there's a way that you guys can figure that out, because, you know, you guys are a lot smarter than me.
Thank you for that. Yeah, there is a way. We could use analysis of covariance to control for one effect, and leave another one free to vary.
Mr. Wayne, sorry.
I'm not even, I'm not going to respond. I guess my only concern with that is, is that there's definitely a different characteristics of poverty versus 168th in poverty versus 20th in M and or 20th in Q. So if you're going to factor for everything, that'll be interesting analysis.
All right. With that, I want to just thank you again, because I agree with Mrs. Fay. It was very well done, and you all came back with a lot of information that we'd asked last semester for you to bring back, and so I appreciate it. We look forward to getting an update probably this summer of some of the things you've been able to do and implement, sharing more with us on some of the additional things that you're going to put in, and then the full-year data information. So thank you so much for what you've done. And with that, we're going to move on to the multi-tiered systems of support for behavior. So I'm not sure our speakers, if you can all swap out, that would be great. Thank you again.
So while we're switching around, everyone, we do need to go back and vote one more time, Ms. Underwood. D3, which was Claims School District of Omaha, Report C, since Ms. Merrick had to abstain from that, we didn't actually have five votes. So I want to ask for another motion on Claims D3, Report C, and a second.
So moved. Second.
So a motion by Ms. Williams, second by Mrs. Fay, to approve Claims School District of Omaha Report C, with Ms. Merrick abstaining from that vote. Roll call, please.
I couldn't hear. Aye.
Scanlon. Okay. Snow.
What are we voting on?
We are...
I'm sorry.
We are voting on D3 Claims, which, on this Report C, that Ms. Merrick had to abstain on prior to five voting numbers getting here.
For the record, I'll blame the superintendent for distracting me. It's true. Yes.
Just because Mr. Snow is distracted by Mr. Evans, I'm going to start over. So, Godding.
Aye.
Merrick. Scanlon. Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion carries. All right, with that, we're going to move to Item E1B, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support for Behavior.
I blame the superintendent for this, but that was six aye.
Okay. You doing all right over there?
No.
All right. Okay, we're going to keep moving. So Dr. Kerberg and team, go ahead.
We're delighted to be talking about a multi-tiered system of support for behavior. I would like to mention, although they're not presenting, in the audience is the steering committee, many members, Sharie Floaro, Jerry Corner, Tyree Sikora, I don't know if you know, I'm going to have her give a wave, Kathy DeSalvo. Kathy's our new supervisor in charge of multi-tiered system of support for behavior, and Kathy was a repurposed position when we had an ESU-19 strategic tutoring position retire. So we filled that vacancy. We didn't add an FTE, we reused it, and we hired Kathy. She comes to us from Boystown, where she was the middle school principal there, and has written several books on behavior issues, as well as positive behavior support. So we welcome Kathy to our team. Next to Kathy is Chad Nichols. He's our coach, as a school psychologist that's supporting MTSSB. Presenting tonight will be McMillan, hence Dr. Talbot, our principal at McMillan, is in the audience. Our director of secondary ed, Susan Christopherson, director of special ed, Karis Saldana, Tyree Sikora, Dr. Sikora I already mentioned, Donna Dobson, director of elementary education. And representing Northwest, which is also presenting tonight, Ally Wilkinson. So we thank Ally, curriculum specialist. They have many people, many places. There's districts in basketball and other events going on, so Mr. Lee could not join. But with me, actually, will be staff I'll introduce in a minute, and they'll do the bulk of the presentation, talking to you about what they're doing to implement a multi-tiered system of support for behavior in their buildings. And a quick review, I'm going to ask Mrs. Saldana, if you haven't already, can you distribute those handouts to the board? If you want a reference, this was the presentation you saw September 21st, packed with details, timelines, budgets, specific information, that's available if you want to go back and take a look at it. And we'll jump into today's presentation, which is right in front of you on the screen, and also attached as a document for the board. And the other board document attached was the template completed, which had similar information. With that, let me jump to the first slide, which tells you this is connected to our strategic plan, gives you our guiding principles, our objectives, and our strategies. Those are also listed on the template in fuller detail, if you'd like to see them. The premise behind what Dr. Tim Lewis said when he came and trained our buildings, we have 12 schools in Phase 1, he's our national consultant, is that we cannot make students learn and behave. Now, that sounds odd, doesn't it? But the whole point of that was to say, "We create an environment, our classroom, that is so structured with good routines and protocols, that kids have the highest likelihood for success." And that's how you create a system of support for students, is with tier-one environments. So that's a district-wide, school-wide management through the implementation of MTSSB with consistency and fidelity. So what is it? It's a problem-solving framework, it's evidence-based, and it's got layers that get increasingly more supportive. What are those layers? A quick review. Tier one, every student gets universal supports. Those are the classroom expectations, the hallway expectations, the assembly expectations. Those are the things that are taught and re-taught, that students get cues and opportunity for learning, instead of discipline, if they don't do them. So it's structuring kids with universal expectations at tier one, it's in all settings for all students, it's preventative, it's proactive, it's 80 to 90% of your student body. The next tier is for 5 to 10% of your student body, and that's small group targeted interventions for kids that need additional support. The third and last tier is individualized for the last 5% of your student body, who needs one-on-one individual support because of some real significant incidents that are probably happening in that child's life. So that triangle, that pyramid, is the basis of positive behavior intervention supports or multi-tiered system of support for behavior. And then you can kind of see, just reading through, the essential features. First of all, every school, the principals involved, with a team of educators, looking at data, with a focus on instruction in terms of teach and practice, giving kids positive feedback when they master those social skills, looking for readiness across tiers, and constantly going back to individuals like Chad, individuals like Kathy, for technical assistance and support, as well as ongoing training. Our next set of training is coming up in March, I think it's the 28th and 29th. What are some of the features? They're clearly defined. Our schools are currently working on behavior expectation matrices, they'll be talking to you about that, they'll be defined for all settings and all classrooms, those are the procedures that are taught and practiced, expected, they discourage problem behaviors, they allow for database decision-making, and we, of course, always involve family through that process. What's the result when this happens? The national research is that you're reducing suspensions, reducing referrals... The national research is that you're reducing suspensions, reducing referrals. You are being sensitive and having conversations that connect with kids of different backgrounds and cultures, and you're respecting that cultural diversity in terms of how you engage and teach, as opposed to discipline first. It's always a teach-first model with high expectations. So, cultural proficiency is embedded in MTSSB, but we didn't want you to think that was the only place we were doing cultural proficiency activities. Here's a listing of just some of the things our school district's doing, whether it's Minnesota Humanities, our Principal Institute, the Connections Program with Project Harmony, what we've done in terms of our academic action plan, or our REACH program for our tier-two support schools. There's a quick list. Here's another page of things we're doing, making invisible, history's visible, our teacher curriculum institute we just implemented in social studies. All of our curricular materials are reviewed and scored against multicultural, non-sexist expectations. The new identification we'll be using for gifted and talented across our district. Our best instructional practices handbook highlights culturally relevant strategies throughout the handbook. Our new AP and honors push for inclusivity, as well as teams reviewing data by subgroup to make sure targeted intervention and supports are provided. Well, that gives you a quick backdrop, and you've got the other document from last September, but we really thought what you wanted to hear was from our buildings. What's actually happening in the schools now that they've received a full day of training in January? And so, with us today, I'd just like to defer to my left, I have Northwest, and I'll actually start with Ed Vogel, he's directly to my left, English teacher, and then Michelle Settlemeyer, science teacher, Northwest High School. And then following that, simply Jessica, because you're seated there, McMillan Middle School, Jessica Layman, and she's a math teacher. And then rounding us out at Gateway Elementary is Dan Curcivo, fifth grade teacher. So, I am going to give the microphone to them, so they can tell you what's the work happening in the buildings as a result of this and what their role is.
Well, thanks for having us here. Northwest is really excited to be involved in the Phase One MTSSB rollout. Talking to the other teammates and staff at staff meetings, everyone's been pretty excited about this, because it's going to create some sort of continuity throughout the building, which is something that we feel that has been sort of missing in our school environment. Before we actually start talking about what we've already implemented, Shelley and I were talking about how we were, you guys were just talking about attendance issues, and we think that MTSSB is something that's going to really help something like attendance, because sometimes students don't show up to school because they don't feel really comfortable coming to school. And so, this is kind of something that can help that out. At Northwest, we think that we have a pretty unique system of how we're running MTSSB. The teachers are actually the leadership position in the school. Our principal, Mr. Lee, has actually advocated himself from a leadership role, and Shelley and I were actually voted in by other teachers to be facilitators. We've tried to make sure that it's all-inclusive. We have, at staff meetings, began to educate the staff on what MTSSB is, to create a matrix of what expectations are across the building. We actually have invited all of the teachers to give their input on that. And our actual committee team, our leadership team, is comprised of teachers from every single department at our building. So, that's actually pretty unique at Northwest, that we have someone representing from every department and almost every single leadership role. Again, our principal's involved, and we actually have an assistant principal, and a couple of our curriculum specialists are involved as well.
And like I said, the staff at Northwest High is genuinely involved in the input, but also the staff that includes our custodial staff, our kitchen staff, our secretarial staff. We got input from our entire staff as to what they feel is important for our students and what our students need in our building in terms of expectations. The other thing is that the family at Northwest High School, because that's what we refer to ourselves as, as a family, is that we're excited about this because it's a building-centric model, because everything is based on your building, on our building, our needs, our students, our staff, versus a district-centric model. And that creates, in our opinion, a more solid foundation to continue to build the program throughout the district and as well as within our building. And again, it's not only to create student accountability, it's not only to create positive environments for the students, but also for the staff in our building. We're holding our staff to the same accountable standards as our students. And if we do that, we're going to, everybody's on the same page, everybody knows the same expectations, same rules, whether it be in the bathroom, or the cafeteria, the halls, or the classroom. We are focused as a team to hold everybody to the same standards. And how we get there is through that scaffolding, just like we do with our students, and such as that as well. So, we at Northwest are really excited to be in this Phase One, in this unique position, because it allows us to be that leader in the district when this rolls out for the other schools. We want to be that liaison. Okay, we got a question. What's Northwest doing and why is it working so well for them? What can we do? What are they doing that we're not that's making it work? But the key thing to remember is that it's data-driven. It's building to building. So, just because it's working in our building doesn't necessarily mean it will work at Central, or North, or McMillan, Miller Park, Buffett, or any of those. But there's still some of those key pieces that may work, and we want to be that school that people do refer to. It's like, hey, what are you doing to making it work so well? And that's what we want to be. We want to continue to be that leader that's willing to put our neck out and try new things for the benefit of our students. And ultimately, it's for the success of our students, and that's ultimately what we want to see, is improved success. Any questions?
Mr. Snow.
Well, this will probably, I'll wait until they all finish, because it's a question in general.
Okay.
Absolutely. Hello, my name is Jessica Layman. I am honored to be here, speaking from McMillan Magnet Center. A couple of things that we are doing is we are also looking at this data-driven. And so, as we are looking at the data, we realized that 72 percent of our referrals were written from three infractions of classroom disruption, disrespect to peers and others, and in subordination. So, one of the first things that the committee did is that we started to define those behavioral infractions, and we created a rubric for our teachers to use. That way, when they're writing referrals, we can have accurate coding, because without accurate coding, we can't make decisions based upon that. So, that's just one thing we did. A little bit about our team is we are composed of also teachers. We have a counselor, our transition room specialist, our school psychologist, and then two administrators. Some goals that we have coming up is that we are going to start really trying to implement a positive environment and having these students here a four-to-one ratio of positive comments to redirections, so that way we create that positive atmosphere that the students do want to be here, and we do have mutual respect between peers and adults. And in addition, there's about 20 of us that are partaking into an opportunity called mindfulness. And so, about 20 of us will be going through mindfulness training that we can then take to our students to work on that of-the-moment intervention, rather than reaction to those behaviors. Any questions I can answer for you?
We'll let the next speaker go, and then we'll go ahead and...
Hi, you. I'm Dan Kirkable, teacher at Gateway, kind of like what my colleagues that I'm sitting next to have already kind of implemented on or hit on. Our team, too, is comprised of four classroom teachers of various grade levels, our school psychologist, our pack facilitator, our school counselor, and then two of our administrators as well. It is led by the teachers. We've invited Kathy DeSalvo and Chad Nichols into all of our meetings as well. Our primary focus has been on that tier one and defining expectations that we want across the entire building, and kind of the same thing that my colleagues hit on. The expectations that are put in place need to be something that the students and staff, and all the staff, whether they're certified, classified, custodial, any of the staff are also complying to, because we really want to drive home that we're role models for, you know, the students that we serve. So, to kind of hit on that, we created a behavior matrix, and the universal expectations that our school's going to hit, because it resonates well with younger students, is the being safe, responsible, and respectful. I think it's three things that the students are able to easily identify with. And so, we wanted to be as inclusive as possible. So, we had a meeting where, when we introduced this to staff, we had a matrix that was blank, and our team kind of identified the different areas, you know, the classroom, the hallways, the restrooms. We do the grab-and-go breakfast, the dismissal, so various areas throughout the building that we really wanted to make sure that these expectations for being safe, responsible, and respectful were really hit, and the students knew what was expected of them. And so, we had the staff meet, and the grade levels, custodial staff, the paraprofessionals, everybody sat down, and we asked them to write two to three different expectations that fit the criteria for each of those expectations. And then, we cut them into strips, and our team then went through and highlighted defined commonalities that really reflected, as holistically as possible, what the staff really wanted in terms of the expectations in all the different areas. So, we've kind of done most of that. It's time-consuming with the different perspectives that all the different people bring to the table, but I think that it's worthwhile really spending time on this, when, you know, that tier one is essentially there to meet the 80 to 90 percent of, you know, the student behavior that we would like to have, you know, in place at all times. Our staff also took a self-assessment survey, and the same thing happened at all the other buildings that are in this. 93 out of about 130 staff completed that assessment. It ranged in two different areas. So, on one side, it talked about whether a certain, so like, are your expectations clearly defined? And, you know, it would be a not in place at all, somewhat in place, you know, in place, or that kind of thing. And then, in regards to that same question, it had the level of importance, whether the staff thought that, you know, this was something that was crucial to be in place, or it wasn't very important at all. And so, we plan on taking our behavior matrix, our results from that survey, and utilizing the information and the data from that to really drive home on our action plan as the next steps that our school's going to be in. So...
And then...
Any questions? Sorry.
If I could pull it back together for the last three slides, and then we'll take questions. What's the research control group and group design results? Data has been graded across the nation. This comes from Dr. Tim Lewis, reducing discipline, improving behavior issues, concentration, pro-social, emotional regulation, improvements in academics, improvements in health and safety, and reductions in teacher-reported bullying behavior, peer rejection, and improved school climate. Our participating schools are, as noted, several of those schools we met with last fall, when our data initially came out on disproportionality. They were eager to jump in and get started, and that was one, two, three, four, five, seven of those schools, and then the remaining five joined through an application process. And that's how we got our first 12 schools. And then, those are our next steps and timeline in terms of where we go from here, just to put that back out in front of you. And one of the questions we've gotten, because it is a program that has a great deal of research behind it, is why didn't we do more schools instead of just 12 for Phase One? And there's a myriad of answers. The most obvious is there is a sub-s shortage in our district, and so, to accommodate for a dozen schools with a team of teachers to attend all-day training is a significant number of guest teachers that we're taking throughout the district. We thank Charles Wakefield HR, they've supported us when we're doing this, but we think it's key that teachers actually get to do this during the school day, instead of a summer activity or a weekend activity. So, we value that, but that's one of the reasons it's a smaller group. We also are rolling out a new behavior dashboard. I'll ask Mr. Rob Dixon if he could come forward just to show you what that is. But it's a new tool that we wanted a small group of principals and teachers to give us feedback on. It's under development by IMS, but it'll give us an opportunity to identify what, when, how, where, in terms of identifying office discipline referrals and how those might be used. And then, of course, we're coming up with a standardized office discipline referral process. Tyree Sikora and others, Chad Nichols, Kathy DeSalvo, are working on that at the same time with our schools as we get them started. And then, Mr. Dixon, Rob's going to give you a quick show of what that behavior dashboard will look like for our schools as they get to work with that.
So, this is just two slides. So, it was important for us to really deliver...
Sorry. I feel like I'm in a rock show now.
It was important for us to deliver, you know, an experience for a person, mainly where they work the most. So, it's putting that in Office 365 in the Waffle. What that gives us is role-based security. So, we only have to build one dashboard for the district level, for executive directors, for principals, for those specialists that utilize this data, even for teachers. So, if we put it in Office 365, then we have role-based security. So, we see that today in our coaching tool. So, we have role-based security in our coaching tool, and we have that exact same format of a dashboard that offers all of that security. So, we'll introduce a tile in the future called dashboards that will just give folks access to all of their dashboards, because we're giving more access to transparent data that just allows people to change instruction. That's what the purpose of this is for. So, at a glance, this is what it looks like. It's very interactive. If you've seen our open book solution, it's built on the same platform. So, if you've, you know that if you hover over information, you get access to information, it'll drill down into that information. You know, I have the ability to look at it by race and ethnicity. I have the ability to look at it from a special education status. I can drill down and filter as I need to, even by school. So, right now, in the dashboard, we'll have initially the 11 schools that are in the MTSSB out within there, but I really could see the dashboard expanding out as we grow the model. And so, you can see all the different filters that I can run on this, and it actively resets the dashboard based upon those filters. So, I can do it by grade level, and so, that's basically, at a glance, what the dashboard would give you. Any questions or comments on that?
Okay, so, how about we open it up to questions first for Rob, and then we'll go back to the speaker. So, does anybody have any questions for Rob specifically, Mr. Dixon? Okay. No.
The dashboard refreshes every night, so the data's pretty relevant.
So, I do have one question. So, is the team at these schools, are they able to see the dashboard data, or is it just the principal?
Not at this moment.
Okay.
We're going to have some professional development, so that way they can see how to use the dashboard. I think that's important. Just the runnings of the dashboard is a little bit different than probably what most are used to.
So, again, very data-driven in helping the team develop the proper protocols for the building. Okay. I'll go to Mr. Snow, because I know he had the first question before, so...
Yes, thank you. I have just two questions. The first one refers to all the 12 schools that are involved with the teams there. How do you guys, how are you guys evaluating yourselves or your tactics? Who's that specialist or that expert that you guys lean to for, and how involved?
Every team, every team has a data secretary present that's going to look up different referrals. Tell us where we're at baseline first.
Let us know what kind of referrals we've been writing, why the suspensions have been happening, what are kids being suspended for, what are the detention reasons? We're going to get baseboard information. At Northwest, we also had teachers tally every time they had to do a redirect, see how many minutes we're losing in a school day. That stuff we're going to be going over tomorrow in our next meeting. It's probably a tremendous amount. So, we're giving a bunch of baseline information, so that way it is data-driven. And so, next year, when we implement this, once we start in August, by the time we're halfway through our first semester, we can start looking at the data and see if we're on a good trend or not. So, that's kind of the way that we've been looking at it. We have a couple of data secretaries that work closely with the people that write and check referrals.
The same would go for McMillan. We are currently looking at our, like I said, 72 percent of our data is coming from the same three scenarios. So, right now, our data processor is currently looking at those after we educated the staff how we would like to see those, and we created the rubric for the staff. We're now looking at that data to see if we can better... We're now looking at that data to see if we can better identify what the issues are and what the core is rather than a blatant statement.
You know, the exact same thing that my colleagues had said. The other piece I think that'll be worthwhile to look at is the information that we collect from the climate surveys. And this will have to be, you know, after this has been implemented, but just the staff, student, and the families' perspective on the overall behaviors and how they're handled and that whole process, so.
That's good to know that you guys, I mean, I understand you guys, this is all voluntary, these 12 schools, correct? They all volunteered, correct?
That, that is true. But the, the first seven schools were prioritized and asked first because their disproportionality was something they wanted to really tackle, and it had been identified by the State Department.
So most of our, most of the issues that I've seen are either disruptive students just trying to catch attention in the classroom, so what kind of a classroom management thing. And the other thing is a fight that has been brewing for a amount of time. How do we, seems like there's a breakdown, I would say, across every district in communication that Mark and I are hypothetically kids in school, and we've been beefing. And we've now crossed paths in the hallway, you know, after three weeks. How do we track that information that if there isn't an issue, that the teachers are able to communicate with such a big school like McMillan or Northwest? Like, how do you have that communication? Is that something that I missed in here to make sure that somebody's keeping an eye that, hey, something's in the air?
Well, I mean, to address that, Mr. Snow, I think one of the big things is that the teachers need to communicate with that. Like I said, if you're, if you guys are beefing in the halls, that's something that you brought in or something that's festered within the school itself. We as teachers aren't necessarily then doing our jobs being on hall duty. And so that's why the MTSSB allows us then to create that accountability for the staff as well. I mean, the teachers need to also, as we know, classroom management is that ever-fluid dimension of teaching that, and for 20, for 45 minutes, it could be going great. In the last two minutes, it can just explode and you don't know why. But that's why I think with this, it allows the, the staff then to look at areas where classroom manage, I mean, offer classroom management, professional development. I mean, what are some tactics, tactics that you can use in your classroom? But I think the key thing is, is then develop those relationships. I mean, a lot of it is developing those relationships, having those positive relationships with your students, whether they see you driving out to Carney for the district basketball game, or up to Fremont, or in the classroom just saying, hey, what's going on? I noticed you're kind of down today. I mean, my door's open. You can come talk to me later. Hey, after class, or come in beforehand. Again, it just boils down to those teachers developing those relationships, which will then filter into creating the positive classroom environment and the positive hall environments that we're looking for, which then allows us to say, hey, something's brewing here. We can feel it. And the communication goes pretty quick then.
Another thing I'd like to add on that is that it's very crucial for teachers to be proactive rather than reactive and really focus on that moment of disruption. And what I've learned through research and different books I've read is that there's really just four types of disruption. And within those four different types of disruption, it's important to identify the position the student is feeling, and that's the issue rather than the action. And that way, if we understand that, then teachers can interrupt that moment of frustration with the student and be proactive with controlling that student behavior rather than reactive. Because we've learned through looking at data that putting students in SSC or putting students in suspension isn't changing their behavior. They're still coming back and behaving the same way. So it's very crucial that we create that positive environment so they feel that they can be successful. And like she said, the relationship's built so that way we can intervene in the moment.
In terms of Gateway, I think that we're one of the schools that had applied to get into this program. We don't see, part of it's probably the elementary school. We don't have as much beef that roams the halls for three weeks. But the primary reason why our building had asked to apply to this, because we do look a little bit different, some of the other schools that are on the list, was the makeup of our school. We're in our third year of our school. We had three schools that were overcrowded, so Highland, Ashland Park, and Pawnee. So we have, you know, a third of our population of teachers who all had experienced the different administrators, who might have had different ideas in terms of how they wanted the procedures handled in their schools. And so for us, this process is more making uniformity and really making Gateway what it is, you know, its own building, and having everybody on the exact same page. So I know that collaborative problem-solving is going to be essential in the action plan as we develop and address any behaviors that are not warranted or wanted, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
I just want to say, I know, Jessica, you said that you're not currently doing at McMillan. And I think, I think what you're all doing in your individual buildings is great. But what I really like, I just wanted to touch base for Northwest and Gateway perspective. I really like getting all of your staff engaged. And maybe McMillan is just not quite at that level, you know, quite at that engagement piece. Because I do think that if your whole staff is engaged, they're going to see them at different phases. And, you know, it, it could be that engineer walking down the hall that catches that kid, and that's just the person. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that and, and hope to see, and maybe just looking at these three schools by the end of the year, having you come back and say, you know, some differences since the last we talked? And is there some other things that you have implemented or realized that maybe we were too heavy on this and not quite heavy on this? But really just see kind of what the rest of the year looks like. But behaviors, definitely in my line of work in mentoring and being buildings, that's the number-one thing that you really see when you're an outsider coming into that building. And so I just think that's an amazing opportunity to really kind of set the standard for what we look like in behavior in schools, regardless if it's elementary, middle, or high school. Because if you don't nip that, just think, if this was 10 years later and we did this, those same kids that you're experiencing in high school, we've already addressed some of those behaviors. And so how great is that, that we can focus more on the academics and other issues that we're having going on as opposed to behavior? So just thank you for the work that you're doing. I think it's amazing stuff. And it takes daring groups to kind of step outside of your boxes of comfortability and really do something that's focused on student success. And if those behaviors aren't addressed, we know that they're not going to be as successful. So just thank you, and I'm excited to hear kind of end of the year what that looked like for you all.
Great. I don't know if there's any other questions.
One of the key comments I want to make with Northwest, and I'm not, I'm not going to even per se how they select. Our, our team was basically volunteers. We weren't selected. We all sent an email. Mr. Lee sent out an email saying, hey, who wants to be involved? And whoever got back first pretty much was selected with regards to that. He didn't per se go out and handpick, say, hey, I want you, you, I mean, so everybody on our team volunteered to be on this team. And so, I mean, that already indicates a huge level of buy-in to the program.
That's a great point. Mr. Snow?
Thank you. I just thought of this, well, I didn't think of this, but Ms. Williams kind of opened up my mind, is something that I was thinking of before, of community partners. I've spread in here, we have to, as a district, continue to open the door to community partners in there because there might be an organization that specializes in something or be able to help you in a situation. I know recently in McMillan, you guys had a lot of black guys, men go to lunch for that outing. I mean, was it, no, was it women, too? Okay.
I'm just laughing and how it came out. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't, well, people like me, I guess, have attended, but what is that? Okay. All right. It's a lot of people. Okay. See, they're taking my thunder. A short meet, a short group? Okay. Short people. Okay. I'm pretty tall. Okay. So back to the, back to the people. Open up our doors to as many community partners, if there's an organization in your community or nearby, how you can collaborate and open up those doors for that. Because I think that majority of the kids that we, that are having these disruptions are minority kids, that it might be something that they don't see in the classroom, or it might be something that they don't have that one-on-one mentor, that person to get on them or be on them about things. And me being around a lot of young males in my program, it's needed. And if we could figure out a way to continue to build on that, I've seen a lot of schools right now build on that, but how we can build on it to connect it with, that if there is an issue, they can reach out to these organizations to come in because they're out there and they're waiting. And if we could tell them what we need them to do, they will run to the action. So thank you guys for doing that as well.
And to, yeah, and kind of to talk to that, I can speak for Northwest in that we have, actually this evening, or afternoon, rather, we had Project Harmony come in and talk to us about post-trauma and, and stress disorders and things like these, which really falls into the hand of MTSSB as well, because there's so many students that you don't know where they fall at in the pyramid. Are they the 80%, that 10%, or that 5% student? And, and why are they there? So once we start figuring out where those students fall, we can start finding the right sort of help for them, especially if it's something chronic. Maybe it is something like post-traumatic stress disorder, something's going on at home that's very serious that we not, we're not going to notice until we realize, oh, it's just because the kid's been missing a lot of school that we noticed this. So it's a really neat opportunity to be able to help a lot of kids out. And that's what makes MTSSB pretty unique.
Also, the School Based Health Center in our building as well, we've got a lot of resources as well. There are community resources with Asia Anderson to reach out, out to and, and that as well, so.
So I just have a quick question. I think more at the elementary level because you don't tend to have parent volunteers at the high school level in the same capacity. But what type of training will be provided? Because you want a common, I mean, there's a common language that will, for instance, be spoken at Gateway. And, and then as a, if I'm a parent coming in, I should probably know what that common language is and be able to communicate that. And to a certain extent, probably at the middle school level. Has that discussion happened yet, or?
In our initial meeting, we kind of briefly highlighted on how are we going to bring this information out to the students and the staff, as well as some of the families? For the students, it was, we have like a television program, I guess, and we were going to have students take part in that, presenting some of the information. So on that level, that was one of the ways. You know, when you walk into the school currently already, we have our expectations, and the parents are going to see it right up on the wall. I mean, they're on these huge banners, you know, our safe, responsible, and respectful. And then the other thing kind of unique to our school is we have a lot of parents that are learning the language as well. And so we already have that community room where, you know, parents are coming in two different, I think there's two different cohorts currently right now. And not only are they learning some of the language piece, they're also learning how to be helpful to their child's success in school. And so, you know, we have family in, in the building all the time that, you know, are exposed to all the different things that are going on. So making sure that they're aware of that, too, during those meetings is going to be one of the pieces that we add.
That's great. Thank you very much. So I would just ask, what is one thing that by next fall, you hope to get from here to next fall to be ready to implement? Just one thing at each of your buildings that you want to see a success in?
One thing that the committee and myself are working on is creating that beginning-of-the-year lesson plans that will create, will be created throughout the whole staff, and all students will get that behavior intervention support. And we're going to be highlighting different areas such as peacefulness and just how to solve conflicts peacefully and diligent and do things diligently. And so we're going to really be educating our students on all of that at the beginning to do some of that beginning-leg work. So again, to be proactive rather than reactive in that. Those lessons are going to be created with numerous staff members on our homeroom committee and in addition to the MTSSB committee.
Go ahead. So I think for Northwest High School, our, our key thing is, is that we're going to have our, our matrix in place and define what the behaviors are and what they are not. Meaning like, what is being prepared to learn look like and what does it not look like? And make those things very visible to our students and our staff. So what it is versus what it is not. And then that allows the kids and the faculty to see, okay, I'm not doing what I need to do, so I can, I mean, it's that accountability, accountability piece again.
I think the biggest goal, and I'm not sure if we'll have it completely ready by the fall, but, you know, as educators or parents or just adults, it's very easy for us to identify when students don't do something right or when they make mistakes. And it's really easy for us to pair some sort of punitive action to a behavior that we don't want to see. But, you know, in our group, I want to see it in our action plan. What do we do to service the students who are repeated offenders of the same, you know, behavior that we don't want to see? I mean, are we doing any service to the students by just saying, you know, you're going to, you know, at the secondary level, we don't really have that issue at our school very much, but, you know, suspensions, what are, what are the students getting out of that? What are they learning? So for us, it's going to be the reteaching of the social skill or whatever infraction that they were commonly seeing. Because, you know, we want to actively support the students and make sure that we're doing something outside of just, you know, something punitive to really curb that student's behavior, so.
Great. Thank you so much. Ms. Williams.
We're sharing a mic. Don't forget. You're trying to hug the mic. Give it here. The only thing that I just, I don't really have a question, but I just would like all of you to think about is, since Mr. Snow and I were talking community partners, I would like to see, and Dr. Kerber, this is maybe for you to take back to the whole group, if there's any way at the beginning of the year, when you guys are starting this conversation, to invite your community partners to get some of that training. I know at an elementary level, that would be something I would jump on in a heartbeat so that I could really relay that to the folks that I'm bringing into those buildings. And so I think that whatever, if they're after school or they come during, regardless of what their role in your building, at least provide that training opportunity for those partners so that they are consistent with what your staff is saying. I think that will just help your buildings and help with some of those students that are having some of those repeat, those, some of those repeat offenders, if they're affiliated with another organization. Maybe that's how you could, we can also get those students some additional support. So just after hearing what you all wanted to do, I just think that would be a great way to help, to support the school. And then that's a great way also to get those, your families involved, because if they're with an outside agency, there's some other contact with families. And so just a great, another layer of support for you.
Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Gadding. Just a couple of comments. One, thank you to our teachers that spoke tonight. Thank you so much for your willingness to be a part of this. And also thanks to the other group that spoke earlier. I know some of you are still here. The reality is it, it's kind of all the above on most things. This is a big component of it, and creating that school-wide vision with the supports that we're providing, I think we're going to see dramatic changes. But on the other hand, I would share, and I think the board's aware of this, our suspensions have been going down. So we've, we've been heading the right direction, and I think the last two years, we've seen some pretty good growth. But on the other hand, we still get better. And what I heard tonight was folks that said, we recognize that, and we want to do whatever we can to partner with community, to look at our data, to discuss individually how we can shift our behaviors to meet the needs of young people. But, but it really is all the above. It is community partners, it is our parent partners, it is what we do internally, and it is what we do as a district to support you. And, and we know we need to continue developing those skill sets as well. It's how we train our new teachers and how we develop them as we bring them on board. And we've already talked about that. It's how we do our principal training and the institute that we do in the summer, as well as tomorrow, we have a principals' meeting at eight o'clock. And I can tell you, we're going to have an inspirational speaker, who's a, a young lady who graduated from an OPS school and overcame a lot of obstacles. And she's going to talk about what it meant to have teachers and administrators that understood her. By the way, if you'd like to come, any board members, you're welcome. At eight o'clock in the morning, we're going to have a pretty inspiring speaker, a young lady who's going to say what a difference a teacher that cares made in her life. So that, that's what it's all about. I'm, I'm already excited about tomorrow morning. She and I have talked quite a bit and looking forward to that message. But it starts with people caring. And that's part of this process, too. So thank you all for, for all the work you're doing in the school board for helping us as we move down this path.
But I just want to thank you all as well. And I know that that's an additional responsibility that you're taking on in your buildings. And we really appreciate it because we know it's exciting and it'll be a benefit to our students. So thank you very much for being here this evening and sharing some time with us and helping us to better understand MTSSB. So with that, the workshop is adjourned at 8:21 PM.